We're going to bring this evening's city council meeting to order. Now open, all council people are present and accounted for. And we will now close.
Welcome, Berwyn.
Anyway, we'll now close this session, go into closed session. We're now going to bring the August 17, 2016 city council chambers, city council meeting to order. We will begin, do we have anything from closed session, John, to announce?
The city council considered the matter listed on the agenda in closed session, and there's no reportable action.
All right, we will now have the Pledge of Allegiance by veteran Ted Hoffman.
Mr. Chairman, join me in saluting our nation's flag.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now have Father Michael Gabriel from St. Anthony and St. Abaha Coptic Orthodox Church come forward. Hey, nice to see you, sir. Good to see you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me here. I am especially honored to deliver tonight invocation during a time when the society is most in need of repentance and hope, where true freedom lies on our relation to God. Please join me as I lead us in prayer. Almighty God, oh Father, we thank you for this opportunity to join in prayer as a community. We ask you, Lord, to give this assembled council the ability to lead us in this community with wisdom and clarity and integrity. Bless and protect all through any difficult scene and unseen, and forgive us if we fall to act in your honor. Lead us to useful work pleasing to you. We commit ourselves to you, Lord, and pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
We hope you'll come back. We're now, one of the things that we do is that we honor various businesses, and tonight it's actually with a lot of pleasure, we're going to honor one that has done a lot for the city of Norco. And actually, when you speak of this particular business, you're actually speaking about a family. And I'm going to bring Pat Malone up in a second, but this family was very, very responsible for our veterans memorial. I can remember the sun standing out in the heat digging this trench along with his friend. And I also see the wife many, many times through the Lions Club giving the Eagle Scout rings. They just do a lot for the city of Norco. So I'm going to bring up Pat Malone, and he will tell you who we're going to honor. They already know, but we'll do a drum roll anyway.[205.31][205.31](Laughter)
You can stand. Oh, go. Thank you. Okay, good. Okay, this is to honor Sparky's Electric and his family, so come on up.[232.56][232.56](Applause) Come on up. I know, you don't want to stand in the public.
She listened to you.
Listen to you.[245.12][245.12](Laughter)
I just don't grow up with granddaddy.
No, it's okay. It's hot outside. Congratulations. So honoree, the city of Norco hereby honors Sparky's Electric, the kind of homegrown family and veteran-owned business that makes Norco strong and independent. The city appreciates the generosity that Sparky's Electric has demonstrated through its sponsorship of community events and its assistance with the construction of the George Ingalls Veterans Memorial Plaza. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[278.66][278.66](Applause)
Come on up.
Why?
Selfie. How do you do that? Can you show me?
Yeah. All right. Would you like to say a few words, please?
It is an honor to be able to do that memorial and serve the city.
Great, buddy. Thank you, Marine.
So now we'll move on to city council business items as follows.
Does anybody want to start? Good, Robin, thank you for volunteering.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report.[344.12][344.12](Laughter)
All right, I can see how this means going, Berwyn, you've been away for a long time. Welcome back.
Thank you, it's good to be back. Ted took my transportation meeting. Vector, we have Vector tomorrow, and the main thing on the, one of the main things on the agenda is talk about the mosquito that causes the yellow fever. It's getting to be a big deal here in Southern California. Orange County's got several cases, and Riverside, San Bernardino, then we've got the Zika that they're talking about. They know of two cases in Riverside County that it's already affected newborns. And like I said, Ted did my other commission, they're dark in August, there won't be any meetings on them, but I hated to miss the Day of the Cowboy. I love that event, I missed it, but finally, after about a week, this video popped up on YouTube. I couldn't believe what I saw.[418.21][418.21](Laughter) Calf dressing, little 300-pound calves. And my colleague's sitting here, she's got one team, and I don't know if they were supposed to be helpers or what, but I laughed so hard, and I finally got embarrassed, because I looked, Robin has got the calf three-fourths of the way down, but she's standing on Jeff Cahann, and calf is standing on Kevin. Now, this is supposed to be a team effort, all three of them. You've got to give Robin credit, and she only gets beat by a hundredth of a second, so next year she'll just have to teach these guys how to do that, but that's all I've got.
Ted.
All right, well, Berwyn, I didn't mind taking your meetings from you. You didn't tell me they served cookies at those transportation meetings, so. But anyway, the Day of the Cowboy, we had a recap yesterday. As for those of you that attended, you know, one thing, it was hot, so it did hurt us a little bit, but luckily, our sponsors helped up, make up the difference in the participants and the attendance. So hats off to all those who worked on it, Brian, I know your crew, and all the other city staff, and Ingalls Park crew that helped put things together. You know, it was a tough day, all those who showed up and went through the heat, and Robin and Jeff and Kevin, hey, they almost won. I was going to call on both teams calves winners, because they were both struggling.[518.14][518.14](Laughter) But when you take them calves off their mommas in the morning, they get the laundry. All right, so that'll be, and next year, put it on your calendars, July 22, Berwyn, s- jula for y'all. All right. I'm also on the Veterans Committee, and this Saturday at 10:00 a.m., August 20, Jeff Anderson from Rebuilding Warriors will be presenting a new dog, Nala, to a veteran, Trish Ellis, she's a U.S. Air Force veteran. She's dealing with some PTSDs and that, so, and so we're good that Jeff has got this program here. The man not only does them here locally, but gives dogs out throughout the United States. And we are, I am very proud that he's a Norconian, and he does it here, so we definitely, if you get a chance to come out, I know it's rodeo weekend, but 10:00 a.m., August 20, in the parking lot, the Veterans Memorial, and it's about 15 minutes, and you'll be surprised when all the people, the other veterans come and support what Jeff and what these people are going through. So it's, a little story, we went to an event, the, from Horse Week, the veteran that got the dog in that morning, he, great guy, very quiet, tell you what, that night he was at this function, totally different person. Outgoing the dog, he really relies on dogs, so it does work. Also, I'll put a plug in for the Norco Mount of Posse for this weekend, remember it's rodeo weekend, August 19, 20, and 21. I'll be there all weekend long, working the gates for my wife's group, the Challenge Children Rodeo. So, and then hats off, I don't see Scott, but Eric, Scott, Brian, your crew, Andy, and the rest of your staff, excellent job, National Night Out. I've been, when I was with the Sheriff's Department, we had several of these, I know it started National Night Out, for those who don't know, it's been around for about 20 years, right, Eric? And they're growing and growing, and we did one heck of a job in our city. Norco, give yourself a hand, because you did an excellent job putting that together. It's one of the better ones I've seen, so next year, got to be in Arupa, but we'll be there. All right, good job. Thank you.
Great.
Thanks, Kevin. Good evening. Briefly, August 4, we had the Chino Basin Desalter Authority Board Meeting. Fairly light meeting, all we basically did was approve some professional service agreements and some land acquisition, and then everything else was closed session. And we were out of there in less than an hour, so that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. First off, on Saturday night also, at the same time as the Mount of Posse rodeo, the Knights Columbus at St. Mel's are going to be having their casino night, which is a lot of fun. I try to go every year. National Night Out was great. And then I attended a, I'm on the Oversight Committee for the GG Project Bond, Measure GG Bond. And some very interesting things, on the 6th, we'll be giving our annual report at the school board meeting, but they're on track with a lot of really, really, really interesting things. And some of the schools, just briefly, Highland Elementary, they're getting fencing upgrades, security cameras, and classroom drops, projector speakers, wall mounts, all kinds of technology. Norco Elementary, if you've gone by there, it's pretty amazing, they're completely rebuilding that entire school, and they're getting all the things I just said. Sierra Vista Elementary, fencing, security, again, all the projectors, speakers, they're getting into the 20th century. Riverview, fencing upgrades, security cameras, again, all the projectors, speakers, wall mounts. Some of these things aren't just the GG grants. Victrice Bauer, which I just found out is not in Norco, but it's a wonderful school, is getting fencing upgrades, cabling, those kinds of things. Norco High School is getting security cameras, fencing upgrades, and finally, they're going to be getting the technology for getting on the Internet and things like that, network equipment. JFK already has all that, but they're getting new security cameras. What's happening is, the GG grant was for construction and to make schools safe. And so right now, a lot of the Norco schools, because we didn't have all that much building, we didn't get a lot of attention. And so this time, we've been very fortunate that John Zikofus, for this GG money, really lobbied for us, so we have a lot of good things happening in the district. Again, if you want to hear more about that, where your $100 per $100,000 go, on September 6, 7:00 p.m., they will have an annual report, and I think you'll find it very interesting if you're into your schools or you have kids that are in the school. As you all know, Corona and Norco Unified School District is considered one of the best schools, literally, in the state of California, and is now in the top 10 for nationally. And so we should be very proud of that. So now moving on to city council consent items, does anybody wish to pull something?
C.
C, Greg. Anyone else?
F.
Anyone else? Do we have any cards?
No cards, Mayor.
We'll do approve the rest.
Second.
Council members Grunmeyer, Hannah, Hoffman.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Newton.
Yes.
Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Greg, C.
Thank you. This item is on the recap of the Planning Commission meeting minutes. It's item four, Continued Public Hearings, subletter C, Zone Code Amendment 2016-04. This is to amend lot coverage. And I've had a conversation with Andy, and City Manager, and with Steve, that what I'd like to do is postpone the Planning Commission coming forward with a zone code amendment on this item. This was an issue of talking about accessory buildings and mass of the buildings, and that we had asked Planning to have the discussion about that, which is obviously, and I appreciate the Planning Commission having that discussion, so now we can create a baseline for further discussions. So I think it's still premature to come forward with a zone code amendment, and what I'd like to be able to do is council work with staff and the City Manager to possibly have maybe two council members, two Planning Commissioners, to further the discussion, now that we've had this baseline created by the Planning Commission. And that was the reason I was pulling this item.
Part of that, I gather you're asking that the Planning Commission...
Turn your mic.
Yes.
Is it?
Yeah. A part of that action is that you're requesting that Steve go back to the Planning Commission and ask that they withdraw the proposed zone code amendment.
If that would be the proper step at this time.
It's ultimately their call.
As long as we keep furthering the discussion.
Ted.
I agree with Greg, we need to discuss this, and then I, being on, just like Greg, being on the Planning Commission, this is, it takes a lot of discussion and a lot of work. I know the Planning Commissioners have done that. I just think if we, the more work we put into it, the better product we're going to come up with. It's like I said before, the appeal process that we've had is, it's getting, we're getting hit with too many, maybe this will stop some of that and actually have a way to better, better the process. And I think with the selected Planning Commissioners and some council people, that would, we can come up with a good, a good match that all of us can agree on.
Robin.
I would concur with my fellow council members, and then the other thing, I was going to pull 2C for, I wanted to comment to Mr. King. Thank you for putting whether or not the applicant was present at the meeting, I do appreciate you including that in the minutes, and I did notice, so thank you.
Berwyn, anything?
No, I agree that they need to look at this and see if we can improve it.
So do we, how do we do that?
If you're, if you're talking about, as Greg suggested, forming some kind of committee, you're going to have to agendize that for the next meeting.
So do we wait till the end of the meeting, or do we do it now?
Oh, I think we...
Well, you're just directing Andy to agendize it.
Okay, all right. And like I said, need to create the baseline to further the conversation, so we've done that step, and I don't think it's anything that we need to rush into, so if it's just a matter of asking Andy to agendize it, to, you know, maybe start making some recommendations for a little subcommittee, that's fine.
What purview do you see the subcommittee covering?
Well, there's a couple of things. One, that came up at the last meeting, was Ted's concern on that these denials that are coming up, and that maybe to develop a, I don't want to say an arbitration subcommittee, but another review committee to look at why we're getting so many denials, it seems lately. And, and I believe that this could maybe, in those discussions, put that further away. Not only with building mass, but there's different things we can look at with setbacks and heights, and maybe try to solidify that code, that, and that maybe we don't run into all these denials that have been coming up on accessory buildings. But at the same time, protecting animal keeping, we, what we may find, Kevin, is 40% is the number, and it, and it works, and we stay with the same accessory building process that we have. Well, I was going to actually, to answer, I was going to actually bring up that we really, we revisit accessory buildings, because it's, it's weird what's going on. And that's the whole part of it, that, and it's tough, and this is what we wrestled with for years and years and years, that we don't have the cookie cutter lots, so you try to be objective, but it always comes back to being subjective. And, and that's the difficulty, and hence why you need additional conversation and discussion with it.
Well, that's a motion, I'll second it. Is there a motion?
Just for clarification, in terms of what staff is being directed to do, so the first step in the process would be to have the Planning Commission withdraw the recommendation that has already been made. The second step in that process would be whether the city council wants to have a formal committee, or could this be something that is done as, as part of the already established business advisory group, if we're talking about having a couple of city council members and then two planning commission members.
Yeah, I think that the motion really all it needs to be is ask the Planning Commission to withdraw the zone code amendment, and then agendize the discussion for the next council meeting.
So the motion being, ask...
That's it.
Ask the Planning Commission to pull the zone code amendment.
Yeah, sound good. So I second. Okay.
Council members Grunmeyer, Hannah, Hoffman.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Newton.
Yes.
Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So now we need to do with what? With C? Do we need to vote to, we've just, we've done that, okay. All right, so now moving on to Robin, F.
We have to approve C.
Mayor, I need a motion to receive and file.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, you have to approve.
Jeez. I'll make a motion to approve.
I asked the question of my attorney, come on, what do you want me to do, buddy?
Except that you were talking about this C.
I'm teasing. I'm giving you a hard time.
Not teasing.
All right, so motion to receive and file. Need a second.
Council members Grunmeyer, Hannah, Hoffman.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Newton.
Yes.
Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now moving on to item F.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chad, how are you this evening?
Good.
Good. I wanted, if you wouldn't mind, for you to explain what this change is going to mean for the residents and for the city. I'll be honest with you, I'm kind of torn about it, obviously, from the point of conservation, but then, if we look at our water budget, we have seen the impacts of conversation, conservation on our budgets as well, so if you can explain what that's going to mean, and then what type of restrictions are we going to have under Level 1 that are different than what we have now.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk about this item. As, as the council knows, the community knows, we're currently in Phase 3, which requires a minimum mandatory conservation of 30%. Now, we haven't put any specific numbers to any specific households, we're not doing budgeting, teaching, we're just asking as a community, try to help us conserve 30%. All of the state's mandate is actually higher than that for us, and we actually achieved about 25% during this time period. At this time, the state has recognized some positives, that we've had some rainfall in the early part of the year, they've heard a lot of the wrangling from auto agencies who can't meet some of these demands, and but, and want an alternative. So the state, at this time, came up with an alternative to where they basically said, if you can self-certify you have enough supplies to meet your demand, then your conservation requirement can go down basically to zero. We were actually certified as a negative 2, which means we can go to 0% as far as conservation that's required. It doesn't mean that conservation shouldn't be encouraged, obviously, as everybody tells it, it's been very hot, we're still in a drought, and there's no telling that the governor may come back four months from now and say, I'm declaring emergency again, we need to go back to these mandated conservation amounts, and everything changes again. So, but at this time, and it's part of what our recommendation was, is in recognizing what most agencies have done around us, and I agree with, is that the state's saying we can go down to zero if we choose to. They're not holding us to 36% anymore. But I think it's not wise to go down to zero and forget messaging and trying to push for conservation, so the thought was, go down to Phase 1, which still puts us in the emergency conservation mode, which is, but it's a 10% voluntary conservation. And so the message and the desire is still to conserve. And then that way, when we, if governor comes back and says, we, we can conserve more again, we're not ramping back up and giving a flip-flop message, we're just simply saying, for a short period, times have changed, they've given it a little bit of relief, now it's going back up again, versus turning everything on and off. And so that, at this point, I didn't want to go out of the emergency ordinance, I felt we should stay in at least, and, because I was trying to balance the fact that we don't have to do 30 anymore, it's not a mandated thing, but we still want to conserve and, or encourage people to conserve. The compromise, in my mind, was go to Phase 1, and that's what I'm recommending, is at least we're staying in conservation, we're recommend, we're requesting assistance still from the community, obviously, city facilities will still try to conserve as much as they can as part of that process. So that's what we're for today, is, and what we're asking.
So on the Level 1 and the 10%, like our rules right now, where you're not supposed to water, or you're only supposed to water between 8:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m., like, are those still things that are under Level 1, or are some of those things lightened up a little bit?
In our current ordinance, those are still under Level 1. Those are mandatory at all times. I mean, the watering window should be after 8:00 p.m. and before 8:00 a.m. That was a mandatory requirement that we added in, in our ordinance. There are actually additional mandatory requirements that are, that are required, that we're going to adopt, or I'm going to bring forward to the council to adopt, in the next council meeting, we're bringing it for a public hearing, to review the changes that have to be put into our ordinance, because they have some mandatory requirements, it was basically going from four mandatory conservation measures at all times to nine that we're going to put in. And they're not burdensome, but they're just specifics, so we want to name them in our ordinance, so that they're permanently there as conditions where people can't wastewater. And they're, they're very specific about it. Plus some other rules that place restrictions on HOAs and other works, or like that, from penalizing homeowners that do efforts to conserve, i.e. tearing out grass and putting in artificial turf, that is now not allowed under the governor's emergency ordinance, that we have to adopt those rules. So there can't be punitive penalties that some homeowners face if they have HOA. So those types of items, we're going to bring to the council's consideration for first reading in September 7th meeting, and will be adopted, if there's no changes, on the second meeting in September. So the, all the mandatory changes that were currently there in the ordinance are always there, that never changes. What changes mainly in going in Phase 3 is the fact that we're, we're mandating, without necessary enforcement, you must conserve 30%, and you must water only on certain, and basically every, just three days only.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion to approve?
Council members Grunmeyer, Hannah, Hoffman, Mayor Portem Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to public comments, anybody who should just speak right now before council, get a card, they're in the back, or get one from the city clerk, you have three minutes. Do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have one card. Pat Overstreet.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Well, I wanted to compliment the city. I know you don't get those very often, but today I was driving up 6th Street, going to check out the Posse Rodeo up at Ingalls, and I noticed the tree trimmers doing a major tree trimming on 6th Street. And you all know what a tree lover and hugger I am, and I fear when anyone says they're a tree trimmer, you give them a, you know, a chainsaw, and they pass their little cards out in the neighborhood, and then they whack the trees to death. But these gentlemen obviously know what they're doing. I didn't really catch the name of them, but I'm hoping that you'll continue using them. And I don't know if I can even ask this request, because you just discussed something about the water on, conservation on the agenda. But I noticed that the sycamore plane trees on Hidden Valley Parkway are really thirsty. And I know they're, they're under some sort of a watering system, but I think they're being underwatered, and I almost don't know if I even should ask you to give them a little more water. And again, request that we do something about the gateway entrances, and as far as our... architecture, with some rocks, and put some water-wise trees in. We really need to get those entrances to the city looking better with all of our tourism that's coming in. So just a general compliment and a general request, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else?
That concludes public comments.
Close public comments, bring it back to council.
Mayor, I just, since Jeff has done, and he didn't come up here with concerts at the park, I just want to publicly tell him what a good job you did up there this year in promoting concerts in the park, because they're all finished in the last one, so thank you, Jeff.
You can't dress a cow worth a hoot, but what a concert! And the guy holding the rope, what a, what a, jeez, just like, holding the rope! All right, moving on to 5A, ordinance number 1006, second reading, zone code amendment 2016-03. City clerk?
Just second reading.
Second meeting.
Just need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Councilmembers Gronmeyer, Hannah.
I'll abstain since I wasn't here at the last one.
Hoffman, Mayor Portem Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Just before we move on, Eric Huger, deputy.
That's Deputy Darrell Robertson, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy, I just want to thank you, the City of Norco supports you, thank you for protecting us tonight. Moving on to 6A, approval of the 2016 City of Norco strategic plan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this item is a discussion regarding the city's 2016 strategic plan. Before I go into the prepared PowerPoint presentation, I'd like to take a minute to recap how we got to where we are today. So, the last strategic plan for the City of Norco was adopted back in 2008, 2009. So earlier this year, we started a process to come up with a new strategic plan, and that would provide a guideline, sort of a roadmap, for the city to follow over the next three years. So one of the first things we did in that process is we engaged management consultant firm, McIntyre Sinclair Strategies, and Dr. Don Sinclair is here in the audience today, he would chime in as necessary, and as you guys recall, he did facilitate the strategic planning workshop that we had back in May of this year. So part of what we did in terms of trying to come up with what this roadmap should be, and the work that should go into that process, to get to that road, to our final destination over the next three years, is to, first of all, we did a survey, electronic survey, of all the stakeholders. This includes all the city council members, all the commission members, including members of IDAC, as well as city staff. And the results of that survey, electronic survey, was returned, and from that result, a compilation was made, in terms of what the stakeholders felt are important for the city to address over the next three years. In addition to the electronic survey that was completed, Don and his partner also did a face-to-face interview of city management staff, as well as members of the city council. Again, the purpose is to try to identify what are the key priorities the city should be focusing over the next three years. And once that process was complete, then on May 24th of this year, we had a strategic planning workshop. This is a workshop where members of the city council, staff, as well as all commission members gathered in an attempt to build a consensus on what our priorities should be over the next three years. And that process was facilitated, then what was remaining was the, that staff was to go back and develop action plans, work plans, if you would, that would help us in reaching the key strategic objectives that were established during that workshop in May. And staff has now done that, and a part of that process in establishing this action plans was also, we involved our consultant here to help us reach a consensus at staff level, in terms of what those key action plans should be, that will be guiding us over the next, over the next three years. Since the draft document was completed, we have made a presentation to all commission members, all the various commissions of the city council, as well as IDAC, and they have all unanimously recommended that the city council approve the strategic plan for 2016. And with that, I will go into the formal presentation regarding the strategic plan. Apparently, this is the only screen that is, that is working tonight, bear with me if you can direct your attention to that, that screen. Thanks, councilmembers, you also do have a copy of the, of the document. Now, one of the first things that we did when we met on May 21st was to reexamine our mission statement. The mission statement is what defines us, what are the core values that the City of Norco, that drives the City of Norco. In reviewing that mission statement, we did make a couple of revisions, minor revision to the mission statement. One of the things that we added to the mission statement is the word visitors. It says the mission, the mission of the City of Norco is to serve its residents, businesses, and visitors, this was not in the previous one. In a friendly, we also added the word friendly, recognizing that the City of Norco is a friendly city. In place of that, though, we did eliminate the word professional, because during the walk, the workshop, there were some discussions about what does the word professional actually mean, and we settled on the word friendly. So, we also added the word preserve a high quality of life in a community that values its identity as Hostown USA. So the word preserve was also inserted into the mission statement to recognize the fact that the city currently enjoys a very high quality of life, but what part of our mission then is to preserve that. So with that, those are the revisions we made to the mission statement, again, which is our core value statement. Then we also took a look at the vision statement. The previous vision statement was vision statement 2020, and we actually made some significant revision to that mission, vision statement 2020. We obviously extended our vision to 2025, so we replaced the 2020 with 2025. Consistent with the mission statement, we also added a family-friendly phrase in the vision statement. Then, there were some other significant changes we made. The previous vision statement included a laundry list of amenities that we were striving to have for the residents of Norco, recognizing that most of those amenities are already in place, and we decided to eliminate those amenities that were already in place. The other two changes we made is that we deleted some goals that pertain to what we want to see the school district look like, and what we wanted the community college to look like, recognizing that we don't actually have control over what takes place with respect to the school district and the community college district. We also eliminated those provisions in terms of how those two entities impact the quality of life here in the City of Norco. So those were the changes we agreed to, and that were made during our workshop on May 21st. Then, as part of that workshop, we established five strategic directions for the city over the next three years. Those strategic directions cover, number one, infrastructure. Infrastructure is an item that we have had a long discussion here in the City of Norco for over many, many months, and one of the things that came out from the information that was gathered or compiled from the survey, both the electronic survey as well as the individual interviews that were conducted, was that the need to find funding for city infrastructure. So, the team agreed in that workshop that establishing funding for planning, maintenance, and replacement, maintenance, replacement, and development of infrastructure was an overriding strategic direction that the city should walk over the next three years. We also agreed that community outreach is an important strategic direction for the city. This deals with how we relate with the community, the level of services we provide to the community, and how we provide those services. And we had that agreement that that should be a strategic priority for the city. Financial stability is a strategic direction that you will find in almost every strategic planning, plan document. Our goal here, which we agreed to, is that we need to ensure that the city is financially stable, and we need to identify new revenue sources, and to continue our current prudent financial management. In the area of economic development, again, this is something that you will find in every strategic document for any city, even though redevelopment agencies are no longer here, every city needs economic development in order to thrive. But for our purpose here, we settled on the fact that we want to capitalize where we already have strength, and that is in the area of transient occupancy, as well as sales tax. So our strategic directive here was to increase transient occupancy tax and sales tax by attracting new businesses, retaining existing businesses, and attracting tourism. Public safety, which again, is a staple for every city, public safety is a fundamental building block of quality of life in every city, so part of our strategic direction that we agreed to is to improve the quality of life through enhancing public safety services in the City of Norco. So these are where the five strategic directions that we agreed to during our workshop on May 21st. Then staff went back to drill it down into some more specifics, what do we need to do in order to accomplish these broad strategic directions? And that takes us to the areas that we're going to be discussing next. In order to determine the quality of, the quality of any action plan that are designed to achieve strategic directives, that, every action plan should have what we have listed here as SMART goals, meaning, number one, action plans needs to be specific, okay? They need to be precise, so that those actions can be measurable once we achieve them. So, specific and measurable, they kind of go hand in hand. So action plans need to be specific, they need to be measurable, most importantly, they have to be achievable. Achievable means we can set lofty goals, grand goals, but if we don't have the resources to achieve them, whether it's human resources or financial resources, then those plans or goals would not make a whole lot of sense. Also relevant is that action plans need to be relevant to the specific strategic direction, one of those five areas that we talked about. They have to be relevant to that specific area. And finally, there has to be a timeframe for accomplishing those, those action plans. So strategic direction number one, this is, again, the top item that came about as a result of the surveys and our discussions on May 21st, as well as face-to-face interviews that were conducted. Action number one, which deals with infrastructure. Our goal here is to establish funding for planning, maintenance, replacement, and development of infrastructure. I need to be very clear with this particular action plan here, which is to present a revenue measure in a special election to generate funding for infrastructure. What this really means is if we are going to generate a meaningful amount of revenue to take care of our infrastructure, the only way we can do that is to, through some special election, do a revenue measure that will generate a significant amount of revenue to address our future infrastructure needs. As you can see from this afternoon, we passed out our capital improvement program budget. What that budget shows, which is something we discussed as part of our CIP plan over the next five years, it does show that we are running out of money to do infrastructure. In fact, our, the money we have on hand will be depleted by fiscal year 2017, 2018. So, in order to generate money to funds, to continue working on our infrastructure, we need to have this revenue measure implemented, completed by March of 2018. Now, there are several sub-action plans that we need to do in order to have this revenue measure implemented. One of the things that we need to do is, first of all, to do some sort of a feasibility study that will determine the structure of revenue measure that residents are likely to approve. For example, are we going to go ahead and recommend a sales tax, additional sales tax as a source of revenue rate raising measure? Are we going to recommend a utility users tax? Are we going to recommend some sort of property tax assessment, similar to what the school district has done on that measure, GG? We believe those are issue part of the sub-action plans that we need to take in order to get to our ultimate goal of presenting a revenue measure to the residents for consideration. Some of the other actions that we need to do will include preparing some emergency resolutions. The reason we need to do that is that if we are going to conduct this revenue measure outside of a city council election, where a majority of the city council members are up for election, then we have to do some emergency resolutions, as well as prepare some documents to move it forward to the, to the voters. The other key items that we need to do here is to conduct some public education and outreach. Let me say this also, that achieving this objective is going to require the cooperation of not just city council members and staff, but also the residents. The residents have to come on board in order for this strategic plan to be implemented. So, we're gonna need a group of residents out there, or citizens, that will help us in leading the charge as far as having this measure proceed. Our goal here is to conduct a special election by November of 2017, and finally, to have this measure completed by 2018, in terms of implementation. There is no city council election that is scheduled in 2017, so this will be a special election to do that. The next action plan, in terms of implementing this infrastructure funding requirement, we want to, one- want to, the things we looked at before in terms of implementing revenue measure, that will provide funding to fund those governmental type of infrastructure, such as our streets, our trails, our public facilities, as well as our park facilities. But we also do have needs in terms of meeting our infrastructure needs pertaining to water and sewer infrastructure. And how we are going to do that is to take a look at our water and sewer rates, and that process is currently underway. We want to make sure that those rates can accommodate our needs for future infrastructure funding, that is water and sewer infrastructure funding. Some of the sub-action plans that we're going to need to take in terms of doing this water rate study, we are going to be conducting a study session with the city council once the consultant comes out with recommendations on what, on how the rates should be adjusted. Secondly, there will be a 2018 protest here in process. What this process does is we will be required to notify every resident in the city with respect to any proposed rate increase. And again, our target date is by February 28th, we should complete that. And assuming that the rates are approved by the city council, we expect to implement those rates by March 1 of 2017. We are not putting all of our eggs in one basket. So in order to do our infrastructure, there are grant opportunities out there that we haven't actually fully capitalized, either because we have limited number of staff and to some extent, limited expertise in this area. So part of what we are recommending as our action plan number three for infrastructure is to go out and solicit for somebody to help us with grant writing and grant solicitation process. And we can either do this on a retainer basis or on a contingency basis. Retainer basis means we'll pay them a certain amount of money on a periodic basis, whether it's quarterly or monthly, for them to help us generate grants that we need to do infrastructure. We can also do it on a contingency basis, which means we will only pay them if they generate some grant funding for us. Our action plan number four with respect to infrastructure funding is one of the things we want to consider is when we do the next review of our fee schedule, we want to consider the possibility of including in our fee structure, a certain component of money that will be dedicated towards replacement of infrastructure. Our current fee structure does not include any portion that is dedicated to replacement of facilities. We want to do that when we do our next general fee schedule review by June of 2017. With that, I can stop here, and we can take questions on this particular strategic direction item, or we can run through the whole presentation and then take questions.
Council, have any questions? Robin?
So Andy, on the strategic direction to look at the taxes on the ballot measure, on your timeline, you have conduct public education outreach October 2017, and then the election in November 2017. Do you guys think that's enough time to get the information out that you want to get to the public?
Yeah, we believe the strategy will be to complete the public outreach by October of 2017.
Oh, okay. All right. So looking from basically between June and October, doing the education then?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that will be the deadline that we would have to have completed that in order to have the election take place by November of 2017.
Okay. And then my second question was on the grant rider, but I think you clarified some of that. My preference would be on contingency, like pay for performance kind of a thing. And I'm just wondering if there has been some research or not, if there's some of these smaller grants that, you know, staff could maybe tackle with an hour here or there, you know, USDA grants and different things where there's not a lot of expertise required, where we're just filling in a few blanks and giving a project title and doing some that way?
And we consistently have done that in the past, generating small grants. But what we're looking for here is that some grants, especially the bigger grants, there is a large amount of investment of time, as well as technical expertise, in order to present these grants to the grant providers. And that's what we are looking at. We'll continue to do, the Sheddards Department, as an example, does several small grants. Parks Department does several small grants, and we have actually done a couple of big ones in the past, but I think this is an area we think we have ability to leverage some more.
Thank you.
One question, Andy, on the sub-action plan for a contract consultant on the revenue measure?
Yes.
To what degree is that? What would you budget, budget range for a consultant? And what degree would this consultant go? Because it seems to me that there is enough history of feasibility of what works, what doesn't work in revenue measures.
Let me just say this first and foremost, is that any of these action plans that require expenditure of monies, to the extent that that would not be done under the city manager's approved budget authority, those items will come back to the city council, just so you know.
Okay.
Right, okay. So with regards to whether there is a need to have somebody help us determine what would be appropriate with respect to the type of revenue measure, and how that revenue measure could be structured, I think there is a, the history here is that most cities who are successful with this process have typically engaged consultants to do it. There is nothing that says we cannot do it on our own if we choose to do so. But I think it would also be very useful to have somebody who has gone through this many, many times with many, many cities to assist us in that process.
Is the consultant more specific to each city as far as, let's say, demographics, income, things like that, or is it just the general, well, if you have a general tax, you need 51% instead of a specific?
I think what they're going to do, consultant, what we're looking at, as a matter of fact, there are several cities across the state that are doing this currently. And I know at least two or three cities in Riverside County that are doing this, going through this process. The role of a consultant in this process would be, for example, they will conduct outreach, interviews, or a polling of residents to gauge what they are willing to do when it comes to a revenue measure, okay? And help guide that process.
Thank you. Ted?
And looking at your plan, kind of seeing what Greg's saying, so conduct special election for November, since we changed our voting from the 2000 to back to 2018, will I have to pay for that, this on a ballot, is what you're looking at extra?
Well, even if we had an election of the city council, to do a revenue measure, that the cost for that would still be separate.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would not change it.
As Andy's indicated, the only real impact of the change is that you'll have to adopt, among other things-
Emergency. Okay. That I understand. And then you, the consultants, or if we go through there, would help us decide if this is going to be a specific tax or a general tax, right?
That's correct.
To where the 66% versus the 51%.
Right. In terms of, that information will come from actually talking to the residents. For example, should we structure it as specific or general proposed revenues?
Okay. And then on the, on your, the one with the plan to adjust water and sewer rates, I would probably guess, you're looking at this for March of 2000, for March 1st of 2017, that we would probably at least include streets, trails, and utility commission on any project like this? I mean, this is why we had the commission or not?
Right, absolutely. When we get the results back, we have to determine what are we going to do, like joint study session of the city council, streets, trails, and utilities commission, or first take it to the streets and trails commission before bringing it and having a study with the city council.
I think it's real important to use the commissions. And then finally, on the action plan four, when you talk about the parks and the fees, you will probably have to go on research to see that we're not going to put ourselves out of the solely rental business, right? We can raise the fees, but if we lose tenants, or we lose renters, then it's not going to do us any good, so.
And we recognize that any revenue that could be generated from this process would be minimal, where it is now going to solve our infrastructure needs.
Just to add to that, when we do that, we will also do a market comparison to make sure that we are not outside of what the market is bearing.
And that's my concern, and so we're staying realistic. Thank you.
Berwin, anything?
No.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on. Strategic direction number two deals with community outreach. And again, it deals with the level of customer service we provide to our residents, and what types of services we provide to our residents. The first thing we want to do here to ensure that we are providing excellent customer service to our residents is to complete, sorry, is to complete customer service training for all of our full-time and part-time employees. We believe this is important in order to provide high level of, higher level quality of services to the residents. Employees need to be trained. They first of all need to understand what does excellent customer service mean to the city of Norco. And so we need to identify our training needs and develop training program, and hopefully our goal here is to complete the training by June 30 of 2017. The second action plan in terms of the level and quality of services provided to the residents is to, one of the things we are doing is how, we are looking at how we share information amongst our own employees in city hall and the outlined locations. One of the things, so what we want to do here is examine how we share information. For example, one of the things that the city clerk has recently started doing is that all the action items, actions taken by the city council is now forwarded to every employee in the city. It's not very uncommon that we find out that our own employees actually don't have complete and accurate information in terms of the services that the city provides, and what is happening within different departments. So in order to provide consistent level of service, and make sure that the information we're providing is consistent amongst all departments, we want to create a way to communicate with our own employees better. And that will include the use of our email, frequent meetings between department heads and employees, and frequent meetings between the city managers and city employees, so that what the city is working on, and the actions that are being taken by the city council adequately and timely convert to all city employees. We recognize it's important, in order to provide excellent customer service, that we have the employees available to do that. And in order to provide a level of service, we have to have a certain number of employees to do that. I have taken a look at the structure of our employees, and what I see is that more than 60% of our senior management staff, along with middle management staff, are almost at retirement age, if not near retirement age. They are at retirement age or at, or near retirement age. What that means, also past, in some cases, like off-lookers. Would that have some significant implications for the city? Because what we do know is that ultimately, these employees will retire. And in a city that has very few number of employees, we need to make, put in place action plans that would make it easy to attract, as well as to replace these employees when that retirement comes, or when employees leave the city. So we need to identify our critical mission positions in the city, and come up with action plans in terms of how we could fill those positions in case there's vacancies. Whether we fill those positions internally, do we have somebody qualified in-house that can be mentored to assume those positions? And if we don't, then we need to put guidelines and outline resources that we need to consult in terms of trying to fill these positions in a timely manner. Again, our goal here is to have, produce a succession plan document by June of 2017. Action plan number four, similar to the situation of having very few number of employees, Norco is, has traditionally, when it comes to salaries, we, surveys have indicated that we are below our competitors. And so part of what we need to do here to make sure that we retain, we attract, and qualified employees is we need to complete a new survey that will be brought back to the city council for review and approval. And we believe that that is critical in terms of our effort to recruit and retain qualified employees on the limited number of positions that we have for the city. And our goal is to have this salary survey completed by June, I'm sorry, by April of next year, April 30, 2017. Action plan number five is to implement programs that will improve communications with residents over a broad spectrum of issues and services. There are some specific sub-action plans we have in place in order to accomplish that. For example, one of the things we want to do is to create a quarterly financial newsletter that can be shared online with our residents. We are going to continue with our efforts to update the city's website. We are, we are going to continue with our efforts to update the city's website. We are going to continue to promote subscription to the city's weekly highlights and NEXO. By the way, if you haven't had a chance to see the city's weekly highlights over the last couple of weeks, I encourage you to do so. I think the current city's weekly highlights is a gold standard. The document looks very impressive, and staff has done a lot of work to improve the format and the look of that document. And I encourage all the residents here, if you, if you're not subscribing to it, do subscribe to it and read it on a weekly basis to know what is going on in city hall. We want to certainly make more use of our Facebook. We are considering launching a Twitter account. Most importantly, this is something that has somewhat been delayed, developing a Norco City app, but that is something that we certainly will make sure that gets delivered before June thirty of two thousand and seventeen. Some other improvements that we are looking at is modernizing our records management through effective use of technology. We have volumes and volumes of records that we are required to retain. There is a need to archive this document in a way that is easy for those documents to be accessed as well as retrieved. So part of what the city clerk is doing is over there, going to be doing over the next year is looking at ways where we can use technology to improve our records management Another action plan here, action plan number seven is to, again, leverage technology solutions to implement systems that will provide residents and businesses with direct access to city information and documents, such as financial information. There is one that is currently underway that we are being, that is, that we are looking at and implementing, and that will allow residents to actually go online and get financial information on an up-to-date basis. We are looking to have the ability to have, provide residents as well as developers the ability to estimate their fees online, and we are looking also to put some of our guidelines with respect to permit processing as well as development processing online. One of the things we have had in the past is that our process is too slow, but in reality, when we have benchmarked it and looked, compared it to the length of time it takes other cities to process entitlements, what we are finding is that we are actually faster than most of these cities. But we need to document that process for the users to, in a, to be better able to understand what those processes are for the city of Norco. And again, our goal here, that, that is actually underway, and we are looking to complete that ultimately by December thirty-fourth of two thousand and seventeen. Action plan number eight, in terms of, again, the services we provide to our residents, we want to increase public safety education programs such as unload, which has been very successful here in the city, neighborhood watch, business watch, cops with, coffee with a, with a cop, and fire prevention programs, as well as make some of our code enforcement processes more transparent. A lot of these programs are already underway, and some, some of them have already been implemented, but we want to complete the items that have been outlined by June thirty of two thousand and seventeen. In the next action plan, action plan number nine, dealing with level of service and how we deliver them to the residents, is ultimately, once we have these things in place, we like to do a survey of our residents to determine whether, the quality of services that are being provided to them, and what other services that they, they should expect from their, from their city. And finally, for this item, which is action plan number ten, the city of Norco is culturally and historically rich. We have historic and cultural resources here in the community, and part of what we have to do is though, to using our historic preservation commission to make sure that the residents of Norco are aware of the, the rich history here in the city of Norco. And so that, that program, we expect to complete by June thirty of two thousand and eighteen.
Any questions from council on this section? Berwin?
Yeah, I got one for the lieutenant. Under action plan number eight was increase the public safety education programs. Are we starting up more new neighborhood watch through town, or is it kind of leveled off from what it was several months ago?
I would say within the last six to twelve months, we have started several new neighborhood watch programs, so that does continue.
Okay, and it actually helps the, with the crime rate, right? I mean, it...
It, it helps the citizens that are involved with that program work with our deputies hand-in-hand, and they learn how to be trained observers and report as a group any, any items or anything that happens suspicious in their neighborhood. Essentially, they're looking out for each other, and they involve us with a call for service as, or if needed.
So it is, it is working, and you're, you're starting more of the program for...
Neighborhood watch is a very, very productive program.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Robin?
Just one question on action plan number five, and I know I've mentioned this before. So two things, the first one, is there any way we can integrate some kind of a survey system? And I know we mentioned that before, and Google isn't necessarily secure, but I know, like, when we have our union votes, we vote electronically online, and there's passwords and all that kind of stuff to verify that the people that are voting are supposed to be voting. So just if we can look into something like that. And then always my favorite, notifications, if there's another way we can look at reaching out to people for notification stuff electronically as well, just to get them in another spot is all. So, and I thought maybe those would fit under number five, or something to think about for later.
I'm going to piggyback off that. Action plan number nine, December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. I'm wondering if maybe we might be able to bump that up to what Robin's talking about in that we have some sort of a way of, I realize that's the gauge, the completed process, but it might be good to get some information like that.
The challenge that we, and we have been talking amongst staff in terms of how we can improve our notification process and how we can conduct surveys online. Certainly, we can use Survey Monkey, which is one thing that we used as part of gathering information for this strategic planning process. But to do that, and to have it be effective, is we need to have a way, such as email addresses of the residents. And that's why we need to continuously promote residents subscribing to our weekly highlights. And in that process provides us that information of, of email contact addresses for residents. Similarly, if we, if we need to do notifications, we might, depending on the type of notification we want to do, we could also accomplish that through that process. So the challenge is collecting that information from our residents.
All right, and then the other thing, Andy, the, what's the delay in the item F under, I'm sorry, finish my questions, five F, develop and deploy city Norco app, what's going on with that?
Yeah, we have actually started that process. Unfortunately, the individual that we engaged to work on this project has not made the progress at the rate of speed that we would have liked, but the project is underway, and the certain aspects of that, of that app has been developed. We have given him some deadline to meet, and we hope that he can meet it, and if that doesn't pan out, then we would have to take a look at a second option.
Okay, thank you for that.
Andy, I like your action three and four, thing is long overdue, the fact that we need to groom successors, whether it be in this department or in the city staff, but, and then retention. I came from an agency that after two years, people left because they went on to greener pastures after they have received all the training, so I'm glad you're looking at that. I'm looking at action plans six and seven to modernize our record-keeping and things like that. And I'm, and I guess it's more of a Cheryl question, is, is this actually affordable? I know that to modernize and do it, it's going to be, to transfer and all those transcripts and all that stuff into a modern, I think it's very expensive.
You can speak to that. I, I think it's affordable based on what preliminary, preliminary information.
Yeah, there'll be several phases in this process, but I think initially we're using what we currently have, because our program that we, we have is underutilized. So we'd like to start the process there and scan our documents, get them into the system to where all employees have access, more efficient process, and then move on to providing more information on the website. So it's going to be in phases, but right now there's...
Well, I'm, I'm really concerned about the record-keeping and trying to get all the old records and transfer those into, into electronic, is that what we're talking about?
That's what we're doing now.
Is that going to incur a large expense of extra staff and...
No, that's being led by deputy city clerk, and we do have support staff, but there's, at this point, no additional cost.
And looking, because this is a strategic plan, this isn't going to be an overwhelming burden on your staff, and it's a doable...
It is a doable.
Okay, that's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Greg?
In action plan number nine, with the citizen survey to gauge citizen perception, quality of life, sense of safety, et cetera, and that completion date, December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, would that not have to be moved up to go to work with action plan one and, and the strategic direction number one, i.e. the revenue measure, where you're going to have a consultant reach out to other stakeholders, find out method of, you know, what's acceptable, how, how do the residents feel, what they're likely to It would seem to me that we maybe need to gauge citizen perception a little sooner than two years after we ask them for tax.
Yeah, that, I do agree with you that that makes sense, that if, if we are going to conduct this survey, this should be part of that, what that survey should measure.
Okay.
But as we are developing this, what we are viewing it a little differently is that we have a lot of things to, to implement. After we have implemented those things, then it would be more appropriate at that time to, to, to gauge residents' perceptions and how they feel with respect to our ability to, whether we have actually delivered as promised. But suddenly, it can be done two different times. There is nothing that stops a consultant or whoever we choose to do the, the action plan and strategic, strategic direction number one from actually incorporating this as part of their survey.
Everything else in this direction seems good. As far as the regard to the employees, I know Ted wants to speed it up, but I always assumed that you guys are working here forever, so.
Moving on.
No need to rush on that one.
Oh boy. Mary, just in, for my other fellow councilperson, Berwin, how's your knee holding up?
It's there.
You need to take a break?
I'm probably okay.
All right, okay, moving on.
These next sections will go faster.
But don't blame it on me if you need to.
So we go to strategic direction number three, financial stability. Again, the goal here, strategic direction is to provide financial stability by identifying new revenue sources and continuing prudent financial management. So the new revenue source part, we believe goes along with action plan number one on strategic direction number one. So, and that's why it's, it's important that we determine how to structure this revenue measure item. We don't want to constrain ourselves, for example, so that a revenue measure would be only structured to do infrastructure. We have a lot of public safety needs that is going to require perhaps new revenue, in other words, would not be accommodated within the existing budget. So this is why it's important that we carefully look at how we structure this, this revenue measure. And it's so, again, the only source of generating a significant amount of revenue to fund items such as increased public safety would, would be through a revenue measure, a process. So strategic act, direction, direction number one, this folds into that one. And that is on the governmental side also, that the same goes for the water and sewer funds. What, what we are doing currently with respect to studying the water and sewer rates, any revenue that is derived from that process would go not just to fund the infrastructure for water and sewer, but also would fund the, the operations aside of water and sewer. So action plan number three, with respect to financial stability and the new revenue sources, one of the things, one of the things that we, we need to do here is to take a look at our outstanding bonded debt. The city has several debt that has been issued, whether it's through the former redevelopment agency, or debt that were issued through the community facilities districts, as well as debt that was issued to finance water and sewer infrastructure. We believe that there are opportunities to refinance those debt at some point, and some of them can be done very quickly to, to achieve debt service savings. So it's similar to refinancing the mortgage on your house with the goal of lowering interest rates. Interest rates have been low for a long period of time. Unfortunately, some of this debt, we cannot refinance them until a certain period of time. However, there are... However, there are certain of this debt that can be refinanced very quickly to achieve debt service savings. For me, the one critical one will be the water and sewer enterprise revenue bond debt, which currently has some interest that is higher than today's market. But the first thing, the first thing has to happen. And one of the things that has to happen with respect to the water and sewer debt is in order for us to obtain lower interest rates, we need to make sure that our credit is correct in that regard. And that's why we are doing this water and sewer rate studies, to make sure that the fiscal condition of that water and sewer funds in good shape to allow for that process to proceed. Again, we are going to be taking a look at the, all of our outstanding debt. But the first sub-action plan we need to do here is to identify a financing team. And what that means is that we need to put a team together, whether it's financial advisors, underwriters, that would help us in this process. These are required people to be in this process. We do have a current team in place, but this team has been here for many, many years. I don't know for how long. I think it's time to also go out and explore to see what is out there in terms of ability to provide a different financing team. And if, after we go through that process and we determine that the existing team is still the appropriate team, we then will continue with that team. But we need to first of all, go through that process. The other thing we want to do here is to create a long-term financial management plan for the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. As you know, our operating budget is done on an annual basis, but we have to, we think we need to have a better look, long-term, with respect to these funds, in terms of where they need, they would be based on certain assumptions over the next five-year time horizon. So that's part of our financial management strategy here would be to create that long-term financial management plan for the water fund, the sewer fund, and the general fund. We are currently going through a cost allocation process and we would like to complete that by January 31st of 2017. A portion of that is already nearly complete. The purpose of cost allocation is that there are cost centers in the city that are overhead cost. And those costs are required to be allocated to the operating departments. For example, the city manager's office, the city clerk's office, the city attorney's office. All these costs are costs that would need to be, that are paid directly out of the general fund. But then that cost associated with this overhead departments and overhead type expenditures gets allocated back to the operating departments. And that process is currently underway, is something that has not been done, I believe, since probably 2004, 2005. And we need to make sure that that allocation is consistent with our current budgets. Similar to our outstanding bonded debt, we also want to look at the potential for prepaying unfunded pension liabilities. Pension liabilities is a big thing for almost every city in California. There have been some cities that have been creative in terms of prepaying some of the liabilities, either by issuing debt at a lower interest rate than what cap charges to finance these liabilities. So we are going to complete a review of that to determine if this is something that would help the city reduce its pension obligation cost.
And healthcare.
And that includes healthcare obligations as well. Action Plan number seven, this is something that we have been actually discussing for quite some time. It looks like one of the cities nearby has actually adopted a similar policy. So Ingalls facilities, we want to have the ability to create, develop naming rights policy for some of our facilities. And the companies that are interested in obtaining these rights would have to pay some revenues to the city of Norco. So currently, Deputy City Manager Brian Petrie, as well as our economic consultant, Roger Grody, are already looking into this process. We believe there is a great potential here to generate revenue, additional revenue for the city of Norco.
Just trying to think how Roger and Steve could come up with these royalties that planning requires a sign to have the Horsetown logo, and then Roger can tell them they have to pay a royalty to do it. And then I think you're on the right track. Andy, why?
Actually, Kelly will do it.
That's right.
One question on Action Plan three with your, identify the financing team. I'm assuming this is not staff?
Yes, that's not staff.
Okay.
Yeah, in order to.
And I have a lot of confidence in you and Gina, believe me.
No, certainly staff will do a good amount of the work.
So who is, you had said that we haven't had a financing team in quite a while?
For example, Urban Futures, we've used Urban Futures, we've used essentially the same underwriter for quite some time, and they're just, now they're looking at underwriters and financial consultants, just to see whether or not what we have now is appropriate.
I haven't heard that name in a long time.
Yeah, because they haven't brought back to you in a long time any refinancing of debt.
Okay.
We did one in 2014, if you recall. And those, the financial advisors, and I don't know how long they've been with the city, but I suppose it's for a great amount of time.
Actually, longer than I have.
Yeah, so, but that, the financial advisors, the underwriters, the bond council, those are teams we need to reexamine and make sure that they are required in any financing transaction.
Yeah. Absent financing, by the way, there's no cost in that. Has to be some financing occur before.
Right.
Right.
Right. I mean, it's similar like what we did here recently with the CDA that.
Yes.
You know, in our share, that was like $400 and some thousand dollars. I mean, I get that. So basically, we're just looking maybe, when you identify this financing team, would this fall under all capital management?
Yeah, debt management.
Okay. But not capital management, or is that one in the same?
Well, they are related. What you issue debt for is to acquire.
Capital.
Capital.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Ted?
Hey, and same with Action Plan number three, did that include the CFDs?
Yeah, the CFDs, actually, they do. And we have refinanced those, some of those in the past, and we believe there is still opportunity to refinance some of them, keeping the length of time the same, but reducing interest rates so that the savings from that will go directly to the CFD.
As the one who lives, who lives with the CFDs, I'm glad to hear you say not to increase the length of time, because that is really.
Yeah, we don't do that.
The CFDs have really been a.
We're precluded from doing that by statute.
Right.
Good, because the existence of the CFDs, for those who don't know, the community facility districts that are especially up in the Norco hills, that's an additional $4,500 a year annually on your taxes. And it really hurts to sell the homes up there and the turnover, so I'm glad you're looking into it.
The first time we did that, we have refinanced that once.
Yes, you're correct.
We are significantly.
You did it with.
Still opportunity to do that one more time.
Okay, well, I'm glad you're looking. Thank you.
Robin?
Nothing.
Berwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, on this Action Plan number seven about the royalties and everything like this, or fixed annual fee, now would that, would that money go towards the operation of Ingalls Park, or how would you do that?
Well, I mean, at the will of City Council, we can designate that money anyhow to City Council, but it will initially flow into the general fund, because that's where the park operations is funded out of the general fund. But the city can then, City Council can decide how to designate some of that money.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, economic development, number four.
Number four, strategic direction, number four. Again, our focus here is under economic development is to increase our transient occupancy tax and increase sales tax by attracting new businesses, returning existing businesses, and promoting tourism. We believe transient occupancy tax, as well as sales tax, is where the city has demonstrated strength. We want to continue along that line by attracting, number one, Action Plan number one here is we'd like to secure entitlements for two new brand name hotels with a minimum of 80 rooms. We'd like to have that accomplished by June 30th of 2018. Similarly, Action Plan number two calls for us to attract and secure commitments from two full-service restaurants that suit our local needs here. Examples of those restaurants include the Longhorn Steakhouse, TGI Fridays. So these are, these are the type of companies, restaurants, that our economic development staff is targeting. And we hope that by June 30th of 2017, we would have accomplished this Action Plan number Action Plan number three calls for us to attract and secure commitments for two national retail chains. Again, that meets our local needs. Examples of retail stores that we are targeting is True Value, True Value Hardware, Dick's Sporting Goods. I know they were here before, but, and left, but a similar one would be like Big Five Sporting Goods. But this is just example for, for example purposes of the type of stores we are trying Action Plan number four, develop new marketing materials that will help us promote local opportunities to set up restaurants, retail, and lodging. This is already underway. A lot of marketing materials have been developed with respect to our attendance at ICSC over the last couple of years, but we want to continue to improve on that so that we can position ourselves in better position to attract this retail and lodging establishments to the city of Norco. Again, our goal is to have working document by June of, June 30th of 2017. And part of that is we are going to create digital prospect database and improve on some of our existing designs so that they can be more effective in reaching our target Another way we think we can increase our sales tax is a lot of retail activities are taking place at CivilX. So one of our goals here is to make sure that we are working closely with CivilX to make sure that all taxable transactions that originate from CivilX, that the city of Norco is designated as the point of sale. We have already established that discussion with them, and it's something that we need to make sure that does take place. Action Plan number six, under economic development, we, again, I think I mentioned this under one of the other items, is we need to develop easy-to-understand written procedures with respect to our permit development process. And I think this will encourage more businesses to look, consider locating here in the city of Norco. Again, our target is to have that task completed by June 30th of 2017. Finally, under Action Plan number seven, economic development, part of how we attract this economic development is to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place to support that. Certainly, businesses are interested in the type of infrastructure that is available in any given city, that is a factor that determines where they locate. So our goal here is, we already have underway some key street improvements, and examples of those are the Hamner Avenue improvement. I think the City Council awarded a contract on that last City Council meeting. We have a contract that will be coming to you soon on Sixth Street. And there are other planned projects that we believe are critical to support our efforts to attract economic development to the city of Norco. Similarly, code enforcement, we believe is also part of economic development strategy. Our plan here is to keep stepping up our code enforcement process. To, our goal ultimately is to have every code case closed within 12 months. And this applies to those situations where the code violator is working with the city to resolve an issue. If they are not working with us to resolve the issue, once we issue their first citation, then I think there's a second citation that is also issued, and that, and if they don't resolve the issue and they are not working with the city towards resolution, then we will turn it over to a city prosecutor.
Berwin, you have any comments?
No, sir. Thanks.
Robin?
No.
Ted?
Yeah, and this is more towards Roger. I know that in your action item number three, you were trying to attract certain businesses like the True Value and that, and I would like to see you try to encourage more interactive businesses. That seems to be what people want to do. If we're going to put ourselves as a destination city, we have potentially, we may lose our bad engage on Sixth Street. So what else do you have people to do other than playing Pokemon out somewhere? We need to look at encouraging people to come to the city because we have something that there isn't anything else, and that's what I'm getting at. I mean, even, I'll throw an example at you, the shooting range in Riverside, they do quite well. I think that fits into our lifestyle to have, if we can have an indoor shooting range here, kind of looks the old west, that's fine, I don't care, but that kind of activity, you know, those kind of things where people can do stuff. It's a tourist attraction, gives somebody else something to do. So I think if you're going to look for interactive businesses, I think that's a plus for. So I think if you're going to look for interactive businesses, I think that's a plus for people to do. Thank you.
Greg?
You could make the shooting range an ancillary use with any bar.
Yeah.
And... I'm trying to capture that whole guns alcohol thing. I'm glad you laughed, Kevin. I'm glad to see that. On action plan two and three, where we list these examples, Longhorn, TGI, True Value, that somewhat troubles me that those names would be in the action plan. Is that... And I guess I think what jumped out to me was that you have True Value Hardware, where I'm a big supporter of our Ace Hardware. So I'd kind of like to see those names struck, unless anyone else has an objection, and just stay with national retail chains.
That would be fine with me. Let me...
I get it as an example, but I don't know if the example...
Right. Originally, we did not have examples, but as we started presenting this to some of the commissions, there was a desire to have some examples cited. And the reasons I cited these, the ones that are cited here, it wasn't totally random. These are organizations that we've had either significant discussions with, or in the case of one of these, they even were negotiating a lease that ultimately did not work out. But, you know, it certainly, whatever council desires in terms of whether or not you want the, any examples, we could have some generic examples, you know, as well, without a branding.
Yeah, I guess why it jumped to me was True Value, where we have an Ace Hardware in town to support, and we have Ken's Sporting Goods, a little Big Five. But I would go with whatever the majority of the council wants to do on it. Andy, then on action plan five, I don't quite understand this with work with Silver Lake to ensure all taxable sales. Is this an enforcement issue? Or, I mean, what's missing that we wouldn't do that with any other business?
Well, like when we have special events at Ingalls, we do have special programs to make sure that all folks that are selling merchandise do have a resubmit that design as Norco as a point of sale.
Okay, so you're going more than if there were specialty event permits at Silver Lake, say, like selling tamale's or whatever, right?
Right. We want to make sure that happens. We also do want to make sure that the ongoing relationship they have such as Cal-Sout or some of those soccer leagues, that they do have City of Norco designated as the point of sale. I've been there, I've purchased merchandise. We just need to make sure those are happening.
Would be just same like the fair or anything like that?
If I can jump in, that's correct. And it's part of our agreement to make sure we do that. And we meet with them, we actually set up a quarterly meeting. We review that, we review annual vendors and that type of thing. And the example that Andy points out is also to make sure that they acquired a business license too. So that's part of just our protocol.
All right, so it would fall under the special permit?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wasn't grabbing. Last was on action plan...
Just to add to that, Councilman, is that also that sometimes those particular special events trigger specific inspections, whether it be by fire, finance department, or ourselves, or even the sheriff's department.
Right.
Based on if alcohol is being used or whatever. So that's part of what is required in the agreement to meet on and go over all those things.
Thank you, Brian. And then just on action plan eight, with our code enforcement, as we start prosecuting these, is there, can there be a financial goal with, when we close these cases, that we're basically at a net zero cost to the city?
That is our current financial goal, to recover cities' costs and attorney's fees.
And would that fall under like any receivership in a way when you're pursuing?
Yeah, we use a code enforcer receiver sometimes. I mean, that's actually a fairly effective way, depending upon the type of violation. And that, we kind of first out of the box, we're covering attorney's fees and costs. Other code enforcement issues are not quite so straightforward. And, I don't say this nicely, that you're prosecuting somebody that isn't taking care of their property because they can't afford to take care of their property. And if the property doesn't have equity, getting attorney's fees out of a stone is difficult. But so we work around that. And I mean, Andy and I have had this discussion a lot about how we go about making sure that we cover our costs.
That is certainly the goal, but it's not always achieved. Because as the city attorney correctly pointed out, there are code situations where we have to get their attention by having the city prosecutor, city attorney, actually initiate a process with them before they comply. That does not always result in a cost recovery.
Right. And that's kind of where I was trying to study up on, like, the receivership part, but with...
Whenever it will work effectively, we work with, actually, Adams Company is a receiver that does a really excellent job. Norco also has some unique issues, things that cities other than Norco wouldn't prosecute. Right now, we're involved in horse-related issues. Everybody knows that the likelihood of actually recovering what we have into it isn't terrific, possible, but not terrific. The flip side is that Norco could not, in good conscience, allow the situations to continue.
Thank you.
I have just one comment, something that's missing from this for me. And maybe it's the Chamber of Commerce, and maybe we need to maybe apply more pressure, is I don't think we make enough of all the businesses that come to Norco. I mean, we had a Le Shwab opened, nothing. I think our Facebook page needs to reflect that we're doing that. I think somehow we need to, and it needs to be part of it, that we take care of the businesses that are here. And when we have these victories, we need to let people know they're happening. Like, for example, we're building a really nice development, a river road, and we're not even going to have a groundbreaking. I think those are things we really should be having, and that they, along with your Facebook, that they should be publicized a lot more. There's this myth that we are business unfriendly, and yet, as Roger knows, we attract a lot of business. And I think that we should maybe include in that policy somehow, we take care of little businesses and we take care of big businesses, which I really think we do. And I think somehow maybe we need to make sure we're cognizant of that in whatever we do. I don't know if it's the Chamber of Commerce we need to talk to, or if we need to do it ourself on Facebook. I just think, I mean, we just went to Le Schwab. I mean, Greg and I go to stuff. We go to stuff all the time, and I don't think he gets out there. So somehow, I think we need to expand our presence. Even construction pictures, hey, this is what's being built in Norco. And I think things like that.
Yeah, I think that's one of the goals we have in our contract with the Chamber. But certainly, we can, ourself as a city, add to that.
Yeah, I think we need to really do something like that, because I think we need to toot our own horn a little bit more. All right, that's all. Moving on, thank you.
Okay, strategic direction number five, public safety. Our number one action plan here, based on the trend in crime and calls for service, is that we would like to get to a point where we increase patrol hours from current 60 hours a day to 80 hours a day. Again, as I stated at the beginning here, this is something that comes with a significant amount of cost. And that's why we have kind of pushed this out to June 30 of 2019. We know that the current level of patrol hours that we have in the city is less than what it used to be pre-recession years. But again, given the fact that each patrol hour costs about $169 currently for this current budget year, and the way I look at this, going from 60 hours to 80 hours will probably require about four additional deputies. And when you look at the cost that is involved here, it's probably between $1.2 to $1.5 million annually. So clearly, this is why I think, again, we need to seriously consider the revenue measure and structure it in a way that will allow us to accommodate our public safety needs. Because this needs what counts towards quality of life in the city of Norco. Oops, didn't get that for everybody to see. So moving on to the next action plan number two. Again, similar to increasing patrol hours, we also would like to have and implement dedicated traffic team consisting of two deputies here in the city of Norco. We have had motorcycle officers in the past. Again, traffic continues to be an issue that is impacting quality of life in the city of Norco, and that is also impacting certainly public safety. Again, if we have the revenues, this is an area that we think that should also receive priority. And we are targeting, what we're currently doing on a limited basis is certainly has made significant improvement by funding, providing funding for $100,000 annually to do traffic enforcement on a limited basis. But ultimately, we want to have a commitment to, that is more permanent and more lasting for this problem. Similarly, under public safety, the sheriffs would like to have the lobby open for more hours. Currently, that is staffed on a part-time basis. This is to provide access for residents to come in, to get information, and to talk to a CSO over the counter on issues. Again, this will require some additional funding, but certainly not at the cost similar to, is much lower cost than the cost of a patrol deputy or a traffic deputy. One of the things that we've been trying to address is how do we make public facilities secure? And public buildings, they do need to be secure to provide for the safety of our residents as well as the safety of employees. So I have asked Brian Petrie, as well as Lieutenant Bredick, to come up with ways that we can secure City Hall, Ingalls, and some of our other public buildings here in the city of Norco. So we're hoping to, again, come up with a plan by June 30 of 2019, not later than June 30, 2017. Just want to mention that this completion date, our current deadline, doesn't mean that some of these things will be completed before that deadline. And again, as we complete them, as we need resources from the City Council, we'll be coming back to the City Council for allocation of resources as necessary to implement these action plans. Again, we need to make sure that we are fully prepared in times of emergency by making sure that our operations plan for the city is up to date and that we are doing the appropriate training. I think last month, the fire department, fire chief, did make a presentation here to the City Council. The same presentation was made at the town hall meeting in terms of our efforts towards making sure that the city is adequately prepared to take care of, to respond effectively to emergency situations. And finally, under action plan number six, is the addition of paramedic squad at the Hamner Station. As you know, most of the calls for service in this city is medical emergencies. And we, the fire department believes, and I do agree, that the response time could be improved if we have the funding necessary to add the paramedic squad at the Hamner Station.
So before we go to conclusion, Berwin, anything to say?
No, sir. Thank you.
Robin?
Andy, I just had a question on the overall strategic plan and our action plans. How often are we looking to review these over the five years? Is it going to be something where it's semi-annually or annually that we can look and see what our progress is and kind of get an update as a council?
Yeah, we believe, at least we need to review this on a biannual basis, at least twice, once every two years, in terms of reporting back to the City Council on progress that has been made and making some potential tweak to the plan. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Dr. Sinclair?
Once every two years is very typical in municipal situations. And Andy and the team, of course, will use the strategic plan on a probably quarterly or semi-annual basis. They'll be reviewing it all the time operationally. But in terms of updating for council, every two years is typically adequate.
One of the things we are going to do also is every item of recommendation we bring to you going forward, we would need to, we need to include how that action relates to items that have been identified in the strategic plan.
Ted?
I'm going to continue on the public safety for us strategy. And I kind of like to add, action plan number seven to this, is that we need to work with the County Board of Supervisors, along with the sheriff and the fire chief, along with the Riverside Sheriff's Association Union, and discuss with them ways to make, I mean, our city contracts are getting out of hand, the contracted rate for the sheriffs and the fire agencies. But we, as a city, we need to address it with the Board of Supervisors. And I understand why the costs go up. You know, the union asks, the union gets, essentially, that's what they get. And I mean, I luckily get a nice pension. But it comes to a point where it's costing us so much more than we can afford and what the residents can afford of contract cities. And I don't know, Andy, and I don't want to, because I think the rest is good, but we need, as a city, to work with the county and maybe take a regional group of cities. I don't want to do that, join in on that task force stuff. But I do think that we, as a city, need to address this with the Board of Supervisors and the sheriff and the RSA to figure out when, what is affordable. Because they get to a point, they're going to price us out of actually trying to do and do what we want to do to keep our community safe as far as public safety.
This is an item that is of significant concern to all contract cities and an item that the contract cities have been trying to address. They have actually attended a Board of Supervisors meeting. We have this quarterly meeting with the sheriff's department. And the sheriff's department recently completed a review by KPMG, and some of the items that... And some of the items that they looked at includes the reasons why these costs are going up. And they made some recommendations in terms of what the county should do with respect to controlling costs such as, some of them are actually similar to some of the items we discussed here today, such as prefunding and pension obligations and healthcare costs and recognizing there has been this pension reform which went into place back in 2013. Unfortunately, the savings from that is not going to begin to materialize until 2023. That's what their own analysis have shown. So this is an ongoing issue. It's not an issue that the city of Norco is concerned by itself, it's an issue that all the contract cities have been discussing with the sheriff's department and the board of supervisors. One of the recommendations that has been made, for example, is to include sheriff's department staff in the contract negotiation between the various associations and the county. Currently, that negotiation takes place between the human resources department, which basically is an administrative function, and sheriff's department staff are not involved in that. So the contract cities have requested to be actually included in that process. At this point, there hasn't been an agreement and the county obviously recognizes that sheriff's staff, county employees, and it would not be appropriate for contract cities to be involved in the contract negotiation process. But however, they are going to allow sheriff department employees to participate in that, in the contract negotiation process. So, Norco is an ongoing concern and it's one that, there has been some discussions between the contract cities and the sheriff's department and the county board of supervisors. And already some recommendations have been incorporated as part of the KPMG study to help reduce the rate of growth in this cost.
Okay, thank you.
Greg? Robin?
No questions.
Berwin? You know, along with that, I guess I look at it a little bit differently, understand the contract costs. But right now, I'm just wondering if we do eventually look at a tax, if that's the road we're going to go down. I'm wondering if, I know it's pretty tough to get a public safety tax, but if we could maybe earmark something within the general fund and then offset it with that 1%. For some reason, we've got fire and we have police. I would love to somehow send a message that, and I get the contract, I get all that stuff. I mean, I went through it with the fire department, but I'd really like our deputy sheriffs to know that we support them. And if we can somehow have within our general fund a certain amount of money that is fed by that 1% or somehow, I don't know if that's possible. I know it's very difficult to get that kind of a tax, but I'd really, right now, at this particular time, I'd really like our sheriff's department to know that we support our deputies. So I get the contract thing, I totally get it, but right now, in my opinion, in many ways, they're underpaid. And so I just kind of wanted to make that statement and if we can figure out a way to have an earmarked set amount of money that we always know that we can get these deputies. I mean, our number one job is public safety. You know, Berwin, we did it with fire, we saved one heck of a lot of money and we've, anyway, that's just kind of a thought I have. So do you have a conclusion or are you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's recommending that, again, you approve the 2016 city of Norco strategic plan. We have taken notes of the minor adjustments that the city council have talked about and will incorporate that. And we will have a final document that will be posted on the city website and we will be sharing this document with our employees too so that they understand what is in it because ultimately they are going to be part of the team that makes this happen.
Any final comments by council?
Yeah, Andy, one. We had the Ad-Hoc Committee on Infrastructure did a lot of work, put a little time in there. And I see that some of that stuff has been incorporated into that. And I hope that on the final documentation that that is also noted as the work that that committee did in there, especially one we talked about in the first strategy in your presentation. Thank you.
Greg, anything?
Only to thank consultants, all the commissions, all the residents that showed up for that workshop and staff, you guys did a pretty good job, a lot of work.
Robin?
I think the same thing. It's really hard to come up with these action plans. We do it at work all the time too, and the amount of effort and time that staff has put in to these is greatly appreciated. And I think you have a great roadmap for the next five years to guide us where we need to go. So job well done.
Berwin?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody that worked on this and all the hours and everything. I believe it'll work because the last thing we did was probably about 2009 and some of those things, when we started that meeting back in May, it showed what we had started out with and most of them have come to being real. So I believe these will too and everything. So thank everybody and do we need a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
Councilmember Scrumeyer, Hannah Hoffman, Mayor Portem Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So moving on to seven, city council, city manager, staff communications. Does anybody have from council? Ted, Greg?
Mine's quick. One thing, Brian, I want to thank you and your staff, if you have not been up to visit the statues, yeah, the art, sorry, the public art, the stage going down. Very good job, new fencing up there around Ingalls Park. So this year at the fair, Alfred Labor Day weekend and the rodeo this weekend, take a look, the park is looking 100% better with the new white vinyl fence, along with the new fence around the statues and your new public yard. It looks good up there, starting to look clean, looks professional. Thank you.
Greg?
Just to follow up on, I guess, the motion that I was to make or to agendize that Andy?
We're already done.
Oh, we're done with that?
Yeah, you directed Andy and it'll come back as agenda.
I'm good. Robin?
Just would like to invite everybody to the Norco Fair and remind everybody that there is a junior livestock show that takes place during the fair, Friday, Saturday, with our auction on Sunday. So come support the youngsters and buy some fabulous animals at the fair.
They're so cute. You spend too much money there, it's really terrible. Berwin? I got a couple of things. First off, in talking to Terry Prokowski, I understand we have an urban forest kind of initiative going on. Do you think we can get a report for that, Andy, at some point? We're going to get ready to cut down 100 trees and...
This is dealing with the car project with the Edison.
Can we maybe get a report on that?
We'll be coming to you.
And then, I'm confused about the Californian Sixth Street. What's wrong with the light? It doesn't seem, what's...
There's nothing wrong with the light, it's functioning as designed. Unfortunately, in my professional opinion, it's really just driver error. I mean, it's designed and works properly. It goes from a protected green arrow to a yellow-green arrow to a solid ball. So at that point, drivers need to understand, like in any other intersection, when you have a solid green ball, you must yield to oncoming traffic. So you have a combination of people maybe not paying attention that it went from a green, a green arrow to a solid green ball and thinking they have time to jump into traffic. Plus you also have people going pretty fast on Sixth Street.
Yeah, really fast.
So that is, it's two combinations of issues and although folks have believed it's created a hazard, it's really just driver error.
Me, I stood there for an hour trying to figure out what was wrong with it and I couldn't see anything. And then finally, you know, we have some really antiquated codes and one of the things that I would like to agendize and look at is we have so many trucks that could be parked in somebody's house, but there's a little glitch in the rule that says if you're along the truck route, it's our own rule, or you go down a private street, you don't have to adhere to that, you're exempt. And I'm wondering if I could, if we could just discuss making it citywide, the rule for trucks and getting those truck permits, maybe putting on our agenda? Can I get a second?
You can, although I think that, I mean, you've seen the report, staff is going to, yeah, it's going to be done.
So it's going to be done? So we don't have to worry about it?
No, it's going to come to the council.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like for the council to direct staff to the city.
Yeah, the issue is a little more legally complicated.
Okay, well, I talked to the city manager today and he said I should make the motion.
Oh, okay, make the motion.
I'm trying to make the motion here, so I need a second on this. Okay.
Councilmembers Scrumeyer, Hannah Hoffman, Mayor Portem Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes, thank you. That's all I have. Does anybody, if you know Jim Jesse, the leather worker, he's a good friend of mine. You probably know him, Berwin. Anyway, he is in hospice right now, so yeah, if we could all send him our prayers, he's only got a few days left and so let's all send him our prayers. And on that note...
I knew about two months ago he was having a lot of problems, but I've been out of commission and I hadn't seen him or Janine, neither one, so yeah, that's too bad.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
Longtime resident here.
Kevin, just real quick, your comment on Californian Sixth, lieutenant did a little impromptu survey for me, how many TCs were there at Sixth and California?
I don't recall that, man. That was three weeks ago.
It was, yeah, it was about one. And it wasn't light related, from what we figured. It wasn't most of the inattentive, so it wasn't that bad.
I kept standing there going, I kept waiting to see like racked of accidents.
It's, yeah, I think we had one there in that whole time.
Anything from staff?
Just one thing, next Friday, Norco High School football kicks off with the brothers and the Under Armour Brothers in Arms game. And we are hosting Desert Ridge from Mesa, Arizona, they're ranked. And it should be an interesting night. And then Upland plays Saturday afternoon and then Centennial Saturday evening, all at Norco High School. And we will be hosting veterans who will be invited to the teen mill that will be at Nellie Weaver Hall next Thursday.
We're going to sell bricks?
Yeah, and we've been in contact with the school for that as well. So anyway, just FYI for you, should be an exciting...
It also looks like Brian found us a cannon for the Ingalls Memorial. We need two of nobody, you know that, right? All right, anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on a couple of items. We indicated the past and there was a request to come back on some traffic calming measure discussion specifically related to speed homes, speed tables. So staff has prepared a preliminary policy that we're going to bring back for council discussion at a future council meeting. I think we're going to do it at a special session in the second meeting in September prior to the council meeting. But I'll be up to it, we can show our proposal because right now we don't have a policy of how we would implement such a process if, whether council wanted one or public felt a group on a particular street felt they needed one, how that process could be done. So we've researched it and developed it and we're going to bring that back for discussion to council to find out whether or not it's something they want to adopt as a policy for future consideration. So that'll come in the second meeting in September regarding Councilman Newton's request in last week's meeting to have staff encourage them to look at traffic calming measures when we're doing capital improvement projects, especially street projects. We did look at Temescal and we already have a proposal that we're going to bring back to council at the next council meeting to consider as far as improvement that we can do. So that'll be coming in the next meeting. And then regarding, you mentioned it regarding Edison and the trees, we already have a catalog of about 600-plus trees that have been, doesn't is dead or dying, that we need to plan for to remove.
Because Edison has mistrimmed them, right? To protect their lines that were there when the trees were planted. Just so we're clear.
We have 600 total or plus total. Part of those, about half, is Edison-related. And we've had discussions with them over the last several months and they have preliminary indicated they have, they will work with us to try to get those trees removed and bear that cost. They're looking at developing their plan, they want a multi-year plan, which we're okay with because we explained to them, removal of the urban forest, you know, while it's necessary because the trees are dead, it does have a public impact and we want to bring that back to council. So we're going to develop a plan of removal, how it will be done, how it's going to be phased. Because we're also going to do our own removals as a city for the city trees, responsibility for those trees that we need to do, that we are funded for. And so we want to make sure at least the councils are aware of how we're going to do it, the public is aware of what trees are going to remove and what phase, how many, and the impact. So at least there's going to be discussion on it so that we have it out there. That's another item we will bring back eventually. Once we get all the information from Edison, we'll bring it back as a discussion meeting, an item at a council meeting. So at least we can all have, you can provide feedback from council and the public.
Great, all right, thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Greg?
Question for chat on the traffic calming and then the traffic calming on Temescal. Should that not go before the Streets and Trails Commission first, before you bring it to us?
We can, in my honest opinion, I don't think it needs to. Because it's, these are fairly simple traffic calming measures, they're not unique. And it's, we can do whatever the council directs, I just think it will delay the process if there's desire to get these in with the improvements that we're planning to do on Temescal.
Wouldn't want to delay the improvements on Temescal, but we were going to hold off somewhat on those improvements till the school construction was completed, correct?
But we can, I mean, they'll all have to be done immediately. And as far as these traffic calming measure improvements, wouldn't have to be done immediately.
I would personally, I'd like to see it go to the Streets and Trails Commission because that's why we have them.
Sure, we can do that.
But I'm only one opinion up here.
I'll agree with him, it's an extra five eyes, set of eyes and ideas and they should, we don't utilize our commissions enough for stuff except for planning, so I think it's a good idea myself.
I see Robin shaking her head. Berwin, are you shaking your head? He's shaking, he said, we're all shaking our head like bobbleheads. All right, anything else? All right, this meeting is adjourned.